Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's six thirty and welcome to your November Louisville Town Council meeting. Glad you could join us. Council members, good to see you. Staff, good to see you. Those of you who are joining at home on TV six, glad you're watching. Hank, have we been able to solve the Facebook dilemma yet?
No, I was just parsing it fifteen minutes ago.
Well, we are on Zoom, so hopefully you'll be able to connect with us.
And on channel six, hopefully.
We are on channel six. I can see, I can see activity there. All right, very good. Council members, welcome. We'll have our customary roll call. Mr. Smitherman.
Good evening.
Ms. Foster.
Good evening.
Ms. Welch.
Here.
Ms. Hunt.
Happy Wednesday.
Mr. Franklin.
Rose.
Dr. Sadler. The mute, Dr. Sadler.
Helped you out there again.
I had lost, I had lost my, I had lost my image.
There we go. And it's heck when you lose your image.
Yeah, no.
Very good. We also have with us town staff manager Hank Perkins, town finance officer Pam Orell, town clerk Ms. Joyce Walker, town co-clerk Ms. Dora Moore, town planner Ms. Stacy Tolbert, town attorney Mr. Bo Half. Let's see, who have I missed? I don't see Ryan, who usually joins us. He may be joining us later.
Ryan is not able to join us this evening.
Okay, very good. And our, our, our community policing sergeant PJ Stringer. Welcome PJ. Good to see y'all. Bo, if you will be kind enough to lead us in the invocation this evening.
I'd be honored. Let us pray. Lord God, we come together tonight, giving you thanks during this month of November, which is the customary month for giving thanks. We give you thanks every day, however. We thank you for this beautiful day of blue skies and sunshine and the colored leaves that you've painted with your paintbrush. And we give you thanks for this town. We give you thanks for its citizens, for the staff that works every day so hard to make the town run and for the elected body that's here tonight. Lord God, we ask that you give them wisdom and strength to do the things that need to be done this evening. And then we ask you to continue to be with us, guide us during the rest of this, this week. We ask all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Bo. Council member Sadler, would you like to lead us, please, in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America to the republic.
Which stands.
One nation. Indivisible, liberty.
Thank you. Council members, you have your agenda that was sent to you prior to this meeting. Ms. Walker, I believe you have one change.
Yes, I would, Mayor, I would like to remove the minutes for October fourteenth. As you well know, we have all been working on other items and have not had an opportunity to get back to doing minutes. And also, did you want to add Ms. Foster under unfinished business?
Absolutely. So council members, under consent agenda, we will remove item number four. And under unfinished business, we will add boards and committees update with councilman, council member Foster. Okay, any, any other revisions or changes? With that, we'll take a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Ms. Welch makes the motion. Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any additional discussion? Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Ms. Franklin.
Ah.
Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Doc Sadler.
Aye.
Very good. Is our unanimous approval of the agenda this evening. Hank, if you'll walk us through the consent agenda, please.
Yes, with the removal of item number four, we only have four left. First is resolution two zero two one zero seven zero for the acceptance and approval of monthly financials for the first month ending for the, I guess it's for the month ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Approval of town council briefing minutes from October seventh, twenty twenty one. Approval of town council closed session minutes from October seventh, twenty twenty one. And lastly, unsealing the town council closed session minutes from October seventh, twenty twenty one.
Excellent. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that routinely come before the town council. They generally include financial reports and minutes. As the manager just read for you right now, I always ask this question to Ms. Orell. Ms. Orell, is there any surprises that we should know about in our financials?
No, not at all. Everything's going just fine.
Very good. With that, council, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for this evening.
The move.
Looks like I've got Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Franklin.
Ah, can you not hear me? I mean.
No, we could. We, we wouldn't pause if we could hear you.
Well, it was funny. I will say this is funny. Jean Marie was showing, being on muted, and I was showing as being unmuted that I could hear her and I can't, you can't hear me. So I'm not sure what's going on there. I thought I'd throw that out.
There's some background noise.
Aye.
Very good. Mayor's eye, that is unanimous. Um, PJ, you are our first presentation this evening with our sheriff's office report.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. First of all, Mayor, I'd like to take a, take a minute and just do a special thank you to all the veterans as we celebrate Veterans Day tomorrow. I appreciate it, not only that they, that they've made. And I don't want that to go unnoticed. And if, if we have any veterans on the council and around town, I just want them to know that they are appreciated and we thank them for their service.
Thank you, PJ.
Thank you, PJ.
So Hank, if you'll pull up the October, you can see where we're at six forty five. Somebody say something. I'm sorry.
Think we're getting a little echo PJ.
Okay, let me see. Does this any better?
No, not really.
Oh. I don't know why it's echoing.
Well, just proceed on. Maybe it'll be a better.
All right.
All right.
Six forty five and then our security checks are at three thirteen. Traffic arrests ninety seven and the alarms sixteen and still maintaining that response time. And as you can see, the incidents for two thousand and twenty compared to five seventy seven, two sixty one, forty nine, and then seventeen alarms this time last year. So there was a little bit of a spike for our calls for service this year or this month. So like I said, they'll kind of go up and down. And so nothing really significant to, to mention. We are getting into that time of the year for leaves. So this, our, our safety tip for this, this month is going to be talking about leaves as crazy as it sounds. So if, if, I want to encourage drivers, if, if you see a pile of leaves on the side of the road, don't run through them. As fun as it may sound, kids like to play and bury theirself. You never know what's covered up with those leaves. It could be cinder blocks. It could be people, whatever the case may be. So I ask our drivers to try to, we typically don't have a lot of piled up leaves. But if you see it, whether it be in town or out of town, try to avoid those. And same thing for parents. If you're going to pile up the leaves for your kids, put them well in the yard. So we don't get any kind of traffic hazards with that. So that's about all I have unless anybody has any questions about this month's stuff.
I, I do have a quick question PJ.
Yes, sir.
I noticed the, the, the traffic violations, arrest, if you will, were almost double from the previous, you know, I mean, it, it's very high. Was there a particular reason for that?
Mr. Franklin, that could be, well, you know, what the towns do have that.
Has that.
Traffic castle. But anytime that the zone cars, if they come out and actually do some traffic enforcement, you could see that, that spike in, in number as well. So.
Anything else for Sergeant Stringer here? Very good. I'm sure if Mr. Moser here was here tonight, he would say, if you have leaves piled in the street, that is not where you should pile them in the town of Louisville. You need to keep them in your yards. Otherwise, they, 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 they present a problem, a traffic problem, but they also will clog up our storm drains. So.
So interesting fact, I didn't know that leaves are a big cause of mold and bacteria. So when you're playing in that, that's, they say that's a good way to, to get mold embedded, that there, those piles of leaves have a lot of, contain a lot of mold.
Very good. Thank you. That leads us to the next subject. Our audit report by Gibson and Company. And Ms. Orell, I believe you'll do the introductions here.
All right, I'm, I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see my PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and Hank, have you promoted Monty to panelist? Hank, you're on mute.
He is though.
Hank, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can't get myself unmuted, but what I said was Monty's already in the meeting.
Okay, so, all right, let's get started then. First of all, we did submit the audited financial statements to the local government commission on October twenty sixth. This is for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. And they were subsequent, subsequently approved on November fourth. And I will say this is the earliest I think they've ever, ever been approved by the local government commission. Starting with this fiscal year just audited, the local government commission is imposing some additional requirements on units of local government as it relates to the annual audit. The local government commission is concerned that some of the governing boards of some local governments are not receiving the results of their audits in a timely manner and some are not even receiving them at all. Their concern is especially great for those units suffering financially as well as those units with material matters of non-compliance and weaknesses in internal controls. So in an effort to improve transparency, the local government commission now requires the following. Now, all audit results must be presented to the governing board by the audit firm in a live meeting of the governing board. This presentation must be made within forty five days of the date that the audit is submitted to the local government commission. In past years, there has never been a requirement that the auditor present the results of the annual audit to the governing board. So this is actually something new. If there are any internal control weaknesses or matters of non-compliance, they must be presented to the governing board at this meeting. In addition, if there are any financial performance indicators of concern, they must also be presented by the auditor to the governing board at this meeting. So to that end, we do have with us tonight Monty Pendry. He is a partner with the audit firm of Gibson and Company. And together, we have put together a presentation for the town council that will address all of the new record, reporting requirements imposed by the local government commission. Monty will begin by reporting on the results of the audit procedures and the audit report. And then I will pick up and report on the numbers and the financial results of the year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Monty to begin his part of the presentation.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, tonight I just want to give you a very brief overview of a few items from our audit. And first of all, I want to hit some highlights from the actual auditor's report itself. The auditor's report and opinion can be found on pages one through three of the annual comprehensive report. And in that, in our opinion, it states that management of the town of Louisville is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. And this does include the design, implementation and maintenance of internal controls relevant to the preparation and fair presentation of financial statements that are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. It is, the auditors are our responsibility as Gibson and Company to express opinions on the financial statements based on the audit. The audit is conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in governmental auditing standards. And you do, you are required to have an audit in accordance with the government auditing, auditing standard as, as well, since you did expend more than a hundred thousand in a federal and state grant monies for the current year. Um, in that audit report, you also, it also will talk about how an audit involves performing procedures to obtain audit evidence about the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements. And all it also includes evaluating the appropriateness of accounting policies used and the right reasonableness of significant estimates made by management as well as evaluating the overall presentation of the financial statements. But one of the most, the most important paragraph in, in the auditor's report is our opinion paragraph. And it states that, in our opinion, based on the audit, the financial statements of the town Louisville present fairly the financial position of the town of Louisville as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. And this is what we call an unmodified or a clean opinion, which is the best opinion we can issue. So that means everything's good. Just a few other comments about the audit itself. During the audit, we found that all the bank accounts were properly, properly reconciled and all the balance sheet accounts were properly reconciled. The accounting records were neat and in good order. We did not have to make any difference this year. Pam does a good job at getting all the, the numbers correct. There were no internal control deficiencies and no matters of non-compliance. And also, there were no budget violations in the general fund or in any of the other governmental funds that you have. And there were no performance indicators of concern that we needed to go over with you during this current audit. And I think now Pam is going to go over some of the actual numbers in the report with you.
Pam, you're muted. As I've done that, probably the most important number of all and the one that draws the most attention is the fund balance in the general fund. I remember the general fund is the main operating fund of the town. At June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, the town had a general fund balance of six million, one hundred sixty seven thousand, eight hundred sixty four dollars. It did decline during the fiscal year by one million, eighty six thousand, eight hundred forty eight dollars. This decline is primarily due to the amount that was transferred from the general fund to the community center capital project fund for the construction of the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. The amount pulled from the general fund to finance the new community center was one million, three hundred twenty six thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. The decline in the general fund balance is also due to the early payoff of the installment bank loan on the town hall building. The additional debt service that was necessary to pay off the loan above what was originally budgeted for the twenty twenty one fiscal year was two hundred seventy three thousand and ninety dollars. Now, these two events alone decreased our fund balance by almost one point six million dollars. So how did we finish the year with only a decline in the fund balance of one million, eighty six thousand dollars?
Hope that's not a question for us.
Oh, it's not. A few things did, I had to switch my screen, sorry. A few things did have a positive effect on our fund balance. First of all, the profit distribution from the ABC board did come in significantly over budget. We collected two hundred twenty four thousand, nine hundred eighty nine dollars, which represents a fifteen percent increase over the prior year. We had only budgeted revenue of one hundred fifty thousand dollars for the budget year. On another positive note, sales tax revenue came in significantly over budget. Sales tax revenue was the one revenue source that was very difficult to budget because at the time, we were in the early stages of the pandemic and we were very unsure of how the government shutdowns would impact the economy. We did collect nine hundred twenty four thousand, three hundred sixty seven dollars in nine hundred twenty four thousand, three hundred sixty seven dollars in sales tax revenue, which represents an eight percent increase over the prior year. We had conservatively only budgeted to receive eight hundred and two thousand, four hundred dollars. On the expenditure side, some of our expenditures came in significantly under budget due to the pandemic and the government shutdowns. The town did spend less on events in the square. Staff overtime was down and the public works department was down one employee during fiscal year. And lastly, the annual transfer of one hundred fifteen thousand dollars from the general fund to the Great Wagon Road Capital Reserve Fund was suspended in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget year. Town council made this decision in the spring of twenty twenty when we were still in the early stages of the pandemic and we were unsure of what the effects would be on revenues. So all that together kind of explains the change in our fund balance for the fiscal year. Now, it's very difficult to look at a number such as the fund balance in our general fund and tell if our town finances are healthy. Instead, you really have to look at that number and how it relates to other numbers in our financials. So to that end, the local government commission provides a calculation that they like to use to help measure the financial health of units of local government. This calculation is called general fund balance available for appropriation as a percentage of general fund expenditures. For those of you that are interested in the math that's behind the percentage, it is calculated as follows. As of the end of each fiscal year, you take your cash and investments and subtract any accounts payable and other accrued expenses. This gives you your fund balance available for appropriation. You then divide this number by the general fund expenditures for the year as well as any transfers out of the general fund during the year. So at June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, the town of Louisville had a general fund balance available for appropriation of five million, seven hundred fifty eight thousand, eight hundred fifty four dollars. This amount as a percentage of general fund expenditures and transfers calculates to ninety seven point eight six percent. If you will recall, the town council in years past approved a fund balance policy. It states that the town will not allow the available fund balance percentage to drop below sixty five percent. So we are well within the requirements of our own town policy. The local government commission recommends that the percentage not dip below eight percent, which is the approximate equivalent of one month's worth of operating expenses. So we can interpret our percentage to mean that at June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, we had enough cash on hand to cover almost a whole year's worth of operating expenses. By this standard, our general fund balance is healthy. With this reserve, we're able to meet all of our obligations as they become due, regardless of the timing of our revenues. It also provides us with a cushion in the event the town is faced with an emergency. And lastly, it also provides the town the financing for future capital improvements. I'm providing right here a table and it gives the history of our available general fund balance and the percentage of it to general fund expenditures over the last few years. Our percentage has always been well above one hundred percent with a high of one hundred fifty eight point twenty, twenty seven percent at June thirtieth, twenty twenty. So the decline of our percentage to ninety seven point eight six percent in this past fiscal year was anticipated by council when they approved the use of excess fund balance to finance the new community center and also the use of excess fund balance to pay off early the installment loan on the town hall building. So I'm going to stop right here. This is all I have to report as far as our general fund balance. Before I talk about the other, other funds in the town, I wanted to see if council had any questions.
Any questions for Pam?
Yeah, I've got a question. Just looking at, since the, the amount that was in our fund balance over a thirty year period, at least my rough calculations off the top of my head indicated we, we were saving about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Is that, is that near accurate?
That's probably a good, a good average, yes.
And so this year, even coming out of COVID with all of the issues that were there, we were able to save about a hundred and ninety two thousand dollars. Is that, is that right?
Well, fund balance did not grow, but it did not decrease as much as it might have.
Right.
Even though we did transfer a significant amount to the community center capital project and we did pay off the town hall debt.
Right.
So we did not add to fund balance. It's just, I think, our, our results were a lot better than we thought they were going to be.
Yeah, so if we, if we discounted those extraordinary expenses, we would have had a hundred, and that's just my calculation based on the numbers you gave, about seventy thousand, about a hundred and twenty two thousand.
That's, that's a good rough estimate, probably, yes.
Ninety two thousand bucks, that would have been saved. All right, that's, that's.
Okay, any other questions before I move on? All right, let's talk about the other funds in the town. First of all, let's talk about the Willow Run Municipal Service District Special Revenue Fund. The MSD had total revenues this year of thirty seven thousand, six hundred eighty nine dollars, which did include property tax revenue of thirty seven thousand, six hundred fifty nine dollars. Expenses totaled nine thousand, one hundred and twenty four dollars. So their fund balance did grow this year by twenty eight thousand, five hundred sixty five dollars to an ending balance, ending fund balance of one hundred ninety three thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. This slide shows the activity in the town's capital reserve funds. For each reserve, you see the beginning balance, any investment earnings added, any transfers into the fund and any transfers out of the fund, and then the balance of each capital reserve at June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. The first capital reserve is the Stormwater Capital Reserve. If you'll recall, council voted to close this capital reserve during the fiscal year when it became apparent that there was no longer a need to build a stormwater pond in the downtown area. When the reserve was closed, the remaining cash was transferred to two other funds. We transferred the remainder to the municipal buildings and land capital reserve and the newly created Public Works Facility Capital Reserve. Earlier in the year, a transfer was also made out of this reserve to fund the new, or the bio sale at the new community center. The next reserve is the Great Wagon Road Right Away and Construction Capital Reserve. The annually, our annual budgeted transfer from the general fund was suspended during this budget year because of revenue uncertainty with the pandemic. So there were no transfers in or out of this reserve. It ended the year with a balance of nine hundred thirty four thousand, four hundred one dollars. The next reserve is the Sidewalk Spike Paths and Greenways Capital Reserve. It did receive its annual transfer of twenty five thousand dollars from the general fund and thus ended the year with a balance of one hundred twenty three thousand, one hundred seventy two dollars. Then the next reserve is the Municipal Buildings and Land Capital Reserve. It did receive its annually budgeted transfer from the general fund of one hundred seventy thousand dollars plus an additional transfer from the Stormwater Capital Reserve of one hundred seventy thousand dollars when it was closed. In addition, you see a transfer out of the reserve of nine hundred ninety seven thousand, seven hundred eighty eight dollars, which of course went to the Community Center Capital Project. So at June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, the balance in the reserve was one hundred seventy thousand, two hundred eighteen dollars. And lastly, we have the newly created Public Works Facility Capital Reserve. It received a transfer of two hundred thirty four thousand, six hundred eighty two dollars at the end of the fiscal year from the Stormwater Capital Reserve when it was closed. So that gives us a grand total in all of the capital reserves at the end of the year of one million, four hundred sixty two thousand, four hundred seventy three dollars. of one million, four hundred sixty-two thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars.
Pam, this is in addition to the six point one million?
In the general fund, yes, that's correct. All right, the last slide here shows our remaining funds, which are capital project funds. Some of these are active and some are not. The first, which is the Great Rec, Great Wagon Road Right-Away and Construction Capital Project Fund, had no activity during the year. It did end the year with a balance of seven hundred thirty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars. The second capital project also saw no activity. The Jack Warren Park Maintenance Facility Playground Expansion Capital Project ended the year with a balance of twenty thousand, six hundred twenty-eight dollars. So those first two funds there had no activity during the current year. The next project on the list is the Gateway Project. It was very active during the year and ended the year with a fund balance of one hundred ninety-nine thousand, eighty dollars. And Hank's been giving an update on the Gateway Project just about every month, so I'm not going to elaborate anymore on that one. The next capital project is the Heritage Drive Regional Stormwater Pond Number One Capital Project. It was closed during the year, as mentioned earlier, so of course it's showing a zero fund balance. The next capital project on the list is the Community Center Capital Project, which of course was very active this year. At June thirtieth, its balance was one million, nine, nine hundred, one million, nine hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred twenty-two dollars. And lastly, the last project on the list is the Roundabout at Louisville-Viana Road and Robin Hood Road and it carried a balance at the end of the year of two hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So that concludes the comments on all of the numbers. I think the town had a very good year despite the pandemic and the I, I think we should be very pleased with how revenues came in. The expenses, expenditure stayed under budget and all in all, it was a very good year. And I'm looking forward to another good year that we're in right now. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Pam or Monty? As always, Pam, thank you for, um, not just what you did with the presentation of this audit report, but what you do every day all year and making sure that we have a wise investment, wise spending, wise tracking policy with the town. So thank you for all you do. Monty, always good to see you. We see you once a year, so I guess we'll see you again next year.
Okay, thank you. And we here at Gibson and Kepney would, uh, like to thank you for allowing us to serve as your auditors and, uh, would like to thank Pam for, like you said, for all her good, hard work. She put together a good report this year and, um, we hope to, uh, see you next year.
Very good.
Oh, Mayor, one more thing. Jeannie did get the annual comprehensive financial report posted to the website this morning. So if everybody will, if anybody wants to go in and look at it, it is under the Finance Department. I'll also be sending it to the printer and I would like to get a headcount of how many council members would actually like to have a bound copy from the printer of the report. Not everybody, okay. All righty. I'll take care of that then. I could get council to approve the audit.
Very good. We'll need a motion. Mr. Smith makes the motion to approve the audit for twenty, 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 twenty-one fiscal year. Sir, a second. But Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any further discussion? Mr. Smithman?
Aye.
He's Foster.
Aye.
Franklin? Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Walsh?
Aye.
Dr. Sadler?
Aye.
Mayor's eye, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. All righty, we've arrived at the point where we have the first opportunity in our public forum for any residents that wish to share their concerns or thoughts with the council. This is our opportunity to listen to you and share what you would like to with our council members and staff. You'll see the screen. You can, the easiest way to get to the Zoom is to go to louisvillenc.net, scroll down and click, click on tonight's town council meeting and that'll bring you right in. However, if you want to call in, the number is right there, six four six, five five eight, eighty-six fifty-six. Yes, I did much better tonight than I did like last month, um, reading numbers. Hank, do we have anybody who has indicated they would like to speak? Even you, who, who's on mute, would you like to speak?
Okay, I've got people in the attendees box, two of you, I guess. If either one of you would like to speak, could you indicate by raising your hand? That should be on the bar at the bottom of your screen. That will let us know that you wish to speak.
I think Mr. Conley is the applicant for the technical review tonight.
Okay, well, then we only have our friend Susan with us this evening and she is not indicating, so we have no one else.
Very good. And I suspect Mr. Fry is also sitting in the background. There is no football on tonight, is there? No, it's Wednesday night, so we have a dual viewership there. Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, if you also wish to comment, you can send your comments to louisville to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net and we will record that as part of this meeting. Stacy, you just mentioned the technical review.
Yes, Hank, if you would promote Mr. Todd Conley.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm going to share my screen, councilmembers, and do a short presentation for you guys. Okay, so tonight before us is LPBR two, zero, two, one, zero, zero, two. It is technically called a planning board review because planning board does review this, but it does require approval of the elected body. So tonight's request is for a new post office to be located downtown. For the record, the properties included are identified as five, eight, eight, five, two, eight, four, seven, eight, four, and also five, eight, eight, five, two, eight, two, seven, five, five. So the property is currently zoned pedestrian business. This is not every zoning request. The underlying zoning re, already allows by right post office as one of the uses for this zoning district. So just for your benefit in chapter A, which is the definitions chapter of our Unified Development Ordinance, the definition of post office is a facility or structure used for the collection, sorting and distribution of mail within several zip code areas having retail services for the general public such as stamps, postcards or postal insurance. So tonight, the request includes a seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-six square foot building. It does have parking on both sides of the building. It will be served by public water and sewer. The total acreage for both of those parcels is two point three four acres. It does pro, the property does front on the Great Wagon Road and it is to have two accesses off the Great Wagon Road. You can see above the sixteen customer spaces, that would be one driveway cut. And then the nineteen employee spaces is another driveway cut because of the circulation needed for the post office. So this will replace the existing post office that is located downtown, right beside of town hall. The addresses and the zip code boundary will not be changing due to this relocation and there will not be any interruption in service for residents. So, so the, um, the United States Postal Service is, you know, this is not their first rodeo, so they'll, they'll be able to transition into the new space and, and not cause any interruption to the residents. Again, the property is located in the downtown overlay and therefore site plans and building plans are required to be approved by the elected body for any new construction. So I just wanted to go through the main high points in the downtown overlay for your benefit and go through each of those things and, and just let you know specifically for this plan, what is in compliance for this plan. So through the downtown overlay, building scale is a requirement. This is in compliance with that. It is a one-story building and it is in character with pedestrian friendliness. It is compliant for the building materials required for the downtown overlay. It's going to be constructed of brick. It is compliant with the roof requirement. The roof is proposed to be a five-twelve pitch, which meets the requirement for the downtown overlay. It is compliant for facade requirements. It will have windows that are proposed along the front facade along with a covered entrance for the pedestrian features, the pedestrian entrances. Continuing on, compliant with facade openings, windows and glass doors are proposed on the front edge of the building. And i- it also requires for windows to be on sides of the buildings that are in any street view, uh, whi- which it does comply with that. It is compliant, the, the UDO requires the orientation or main entrance to be on the Great Wagon Road or Shallowford Road. It, it does face in front of the Great Wagon Road. It does have a covered walkway. The covered entrance is proposed on the building. And then that is compliant with the building height. The UDO requires, um, in the downtown overlay, in the downtown core area, it is going to be a one-story building, which is compliant and it is less than twen- forty-eight feet. The, the actual height of the building is proposed to be about twenty-four and a half feet. So rounding it up, it is compliant with service and utility areas. They are located to the side and rear of the building. It does also meet the facade requirements for this, the screening requirements for those areas. The landscaping is compliant. We have motor vehicle service area requirements, which is a fancy name for a parking lot. Just, but the motor vehicle ser, M D S A, um, calculates a requirement of five trees, but ten are being proposed along with landscaping on the front of the building, the sides of the buildings throughout the site and also the trees along the Great Wagon Road, the street trees. Parking is located on the sides of the building with pedestrian connections made to Great Wagon Road. That is compliant because in our downtown core area, we do not, we do not allow parking in front of the building. So, so this parking is, is to the sides of both buildings. So this is a map of the area. You can tell the yellow hashed area is the parcels where it is to be placed. Right across the road, this is the roller mill area and then right behind it, this is Lowe's Foods, just to orient you with the site. This is the site plan. You can see, um, I'll try to zoom this just a tad. Well, I don't know if that helped or not. You can see the landscaping that is proposed throughout the site, the large trees that are going to be planted along with the trees that are existing along the Great Wagon Road. Some of those will have to be removed, two of those in fact, for the driveway cuts. They have been in contact with N C D O T to make sure the site and the layout and the plans and everything is consistent with the design that they have planned for the Great Wagon Road. So that they have been in contact with them. So you can see the proposed building back here to the back. They have some screening here to help screen the loading area and everything for the deliveries and, and mail and that sort of thing. Over here is the customer parking. You can see the arrows, the way that it will flow. There are some boxes here for mail drop-off and then, and it flows right around the building nicely. Not to be, not to interfere at all with over here, the teammate parking or the employee parking is where this would take place over here. They do have a sidewalk at the front of the building. This would be the covered area where they will connect to the existing sidewalk on Great Wagon Road. Zoom back out. And then these are the elevations of the building. You can see this is the front elevation right here where my cursor is. I don't know if you can see that or not. Where they, they do have a covered area and that would be the front of the building that would be facing the Great Wagon Road. And you have both sides of the building and then the back of the building back here. Those are the elevations that are proposed. Again, brick, uh, windows, um, and the roof pitch asphalt shingles is what is proposed. Okay. And then lastly, the planning board reviewed this case on their October thirteenth meeting. They voted to recommend approval of the technical review to council. They recommend that the building is in compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance. They did have two areas of discussion. The one was roof pitch. The applicant did go back to the architect and with the size and the need of the building and, and, you know, in, interior to the building, there's, there's a lot that goes into it with, um, you know, servicing of the mail, um, post office boxes, those types of things. A roof pitch higher than five-twelve, that they, the architects couldn't make that work, but five-twelve is still in compliance with our Unified Development Ordinance. And then also, um, they talked about, had discussion about a pedestrian connection to Lowe's Foods. And I'm going to scroll back up to the site plan here. You can see this sidewalk along Great Wagon Road. It, it's a very short distance to where there are sidewalks back here that go back to a more pedestrian friendly area. If they were to make a connection back here somewhere to the Lowe's Foods area, the, the first thing that would have to happen is, is obviously Lowe's Foods would have to grant them an easement. It is a private property owner and, and so Lowe's Foods would have to go through that. Since when, when Lowe's Foods was developed, um, that connection wasn't, wasn't required to be made to other properties. But then also, um, if you go take a look out there, when I, when I drove out there and just walked around the site a little bit, this area is, is just, it would dump them right into parking spots and right into the parking lot. So I actually recommend against making that connection mainly because there is the pedestrian connection here to the front of the property, but back here to the back of the property, it's just not, in my opinion, it's just not safe to dump pedestrians right into a parking lot, especially that area of the parking lot that, that there's no speed bumps through there. And so that, that's an area that a lot of them are using just to kind of get around and, and get out quickly. And it also dumps right out to the dumpster area for the New Antonio's Restaurant. There is no existing sidewalk there, um, at that portion. There are no curb stops for those parking spaces. So I just don't, I just don't feel that it's, it's really safe. I would rather pedestrians use the sidewalks along Great Wagon Road and, and connect that way around the other side of the building instead of dumping them into parking lot that, that, that doesn't, that there's not a pedestrian connection there to connect them to. So, um, if anyone has any questions or anything that they would like for me to touch on, I'd be happy to, to address those.
Very good. Any questions for Stacy?
Yes, I have a question please. Stacy, if council approves the site plan, how long will it be before it would possibly be built and finished?
I could probably address that a little bit better, but I do know that they are on a tight timeframe. They want to, to get it done as soon as they can. This, if, if they get approval tonight, that would pave the way for them to go and be able to start the permitting process. Since they don't have to go through a rezoning, the, the zoning is already underlying and allows this use. So, so this is the last approval they would need and then they can start the permitting processes for stormwater, road control, building permits, that sort of thing, so they could start construction.
Any other questions?
Stacy, thank you very much. I loved how you had presentation and it said compliant, not, that's very, that's very nice. I have two questions. One, in regards to the customer space, um, the parking spaces. Um, I noticed that there were sixteen parking spaces and they're all lined up on the front of the, on that side. Is that correct? Um, as the, where the pedestrian entrance is at?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's eighteen, if I, and my, my numbers may be wrong, but there's about eighteen for the, um, for the employees. Was there any more parking that we could, that, that you guys looked at on the site plan of being able to put in there? Would there only be in sixteen and, and out of seventy-one hundred square feet?
Well, we, we don't like to, in the downtown overlay, there's only a certain number of parking that they're allowed to increase by. I think that's only like twenty-five percent off the top of my head if I'm, without me looking at the ordinance. So, so our ordinance has a certain number of parking spaces that are required. In our downtown overlay, we don't like to see a ton more parking than, than what is required. And so they, they are also going, there's going to be on that side of Great Wagon Road, there's going to be some on-street parking spaces as well that they will be able to utilize for customers, that sort of thing. A lot of times what we see in post offices, even, even over here, at the existing post offices, is people go and they park and they're in and out. But a lot of what we see is people driving through, you know, dropping off at the, at the little kiosk, the little blue boxes that you see, and they never really even get out of their cars. So I, I feel like the sixteen spaces is, is pretty accurate, you know, it's pretty accommodating for the post office. It is, I, I, I bet it's triple what we have now.
I think it's only six or seven.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um. Double to triple of what, what, what is offered now.
The space between the parking spaces and where they're going to be driving through, is there going to be ample space there where, where, um, we could have motorists kind of navigate a little bit better at the current site? Where the post office is, it, it kind of gets a little bit jammed up if you've got someone coming through and then you've got someone backing out.
Go ahead, I'm sorry Melissa.
No, that's, that was it.
Uh, one thing that helps this is these are angled parking spaces. And so that tremendously helps motorists that are backing out to be able to see better rather than ninety-degree angle or ninety-degree parking. So that the angled parking does help that. Um, it helps the in and out a whole lot better, um, of, you know, with that. Um, and then too, you know, we're, we're having it all in one direction. I know there's one direction over here, but sometimes it gets a little jumbled, it can get a little jumbled. Um, and I think too, just the, the relocation, the, the new location that they have chosen for, for a new post office lends itself much, much better to um pedestrians really. I mean, I know there's a lot of pedestrians on Shallowford, but, um, you know, if someone is at Lowes Foods, they can just kind of walk, walk using the sidewalk along Great Wagon Road. If somebody is at the meal, um, or, you know, at the coffee shop or, you know, any of those establishments there at the roller mill, then they can, they can still utilize that sidewalk um to walk and pick up their mail. Um, so I'm hoping they'll, they'll take advantage of that as well too, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Stacy? Not council members, we'll entertain a motion.
A motion.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion to approve or accept the technical review for compliance. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any additional discussion? Mr. Smithman.
Hi.
Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Doc Sadler.
Hi.
Franklin.
Ah.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Mayor's eye, that is unanimous. Mr. Conley, thank you for the, your investment and uh from looking at the, certainly the architecturals, it looks like the building is going to be, the facade is going to be a whole lot more in keeping with what we're trying to accomplish in an overall look and feel in our downtown, so thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Very good. Ms. Foster, you have an update on our boards and committees.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, let's see, let me, let me pull up and share my screen here for a second. Okay. Everyone see this? Yep, okay, so it's the same format as, as before, let me, um. Let me, let me move on here, sorry. Something is not happening, there we go. As always, we know how important our boards and committees are to what we do. From a consistency standpoint, folks, um, we, we've taken you through this before, so we're trying to use the same format. So it's just sort of a rote reminder of what we've done and where we are. So of course, we've gotten the boards and committee members' experience, we've checked in with the staff, doesn't mean we're not going to continue to do that. This isn't linear, it's starting to get layered and, and, and more robust. We are continuing to look at best practices. As of last month, I had an opportunity to do some work with the School of Government and some other municipalities to hear what they're doing. So we're in the process, it's still, it's still early, but we are looking at what municipalities we would want to look at for best practices and ideas based upon which ones seem most consistent with ours. Um, so that's something we've started, but we're still in the process of doing that. But what we've added as an update for you all is, the last session, you didn't have this step, this, this one that I've highlighted for tonight, but we've added that and I'll, I'll tell you why. Um, prior to recommending to council, we, we found in the past month, after speaking to the chairs and the vice chairs of the boards and committees, that rather than providing sort of policies and procedures from on high, even though they were sort of bubbling up from their ideas, we felt that it was important, I don't need to tell this group with all the work you all have been doing with the, the community center mayor and all the volunteers and staff, but it, we felt it was important to beta test or, or practice a few of these ideas in real time with a couple of the boards and committees who are willing to do that. So what we've done in the past, well, this week for sure, we've checked in with a couple of boards and committees, specifically Parks and Rec and Cultural Development, as well as the Environmental Conservation Sustainability Committee. And they did a little bit of beta testing. Hold that thought, we'll drill down on that a little bit more. So before we provide recommendations to council about what we think needs to happen, we thought it was important that we check out and see if our ideas make sense and work on, on the front line with the people who are trying to, to, to support the town governing. So that said, again, quick highlight, you all know where we've been in September and October in terms of our activities. We won't, we won't go there again. For November, as I said, um, we've been doing the, the beta test and modeling and we plan on doing that into December and then giving you an update in real time, so you know what's happening out there, especially as you all are going to be seeing and interacting with some of these folks in the next week with the community center activity. And then I'll speak to what we, what we're anticipating is going to happen in January or February, okay? So moving on. Um, let me, let me back up here. This, this is an excerpt from what we provided, we, the work group, provided to the um, chairs and vice chairs at their focus group meeting that we had about a month ago or so. Um, what, what we heard that folks wanted in the surveys was one thing, but then we started drilling down over the past year to find out all the, much more specifics. And what, what we did was parking all egos and trying to just hear what are the needs. We heard that one of the biggest areas of need was to say, how can we make the meetings more effective? The meetings are the main way in which the boards and committees and the volunteers interact with the town. So those meetings become very important. And obviously, in the past year with the pandemic and Zoom and the state of emergency, it, it's been an unusual situation. But that being said, we're, we're trying to look at what things are going to look like when we get out of the state of emergency and the pande- pandemic scenario. But these are the, the needs that were addressed. Um, how do you make the meetings more effective? Well, role clarification, role clarification, role clarification. Get, get clear too about what actions did the group decide, whether they're consensus, consensus actions or motions. We tend to focus on motions, but so often there are consensus items that come out of these meetings. Um, folks want to know what the status of the action is coming out of the meeting, where did it go? How do I, we make sure that their, the action items are being followed up with through staff or whomever is responsible? Um, and then tracking that with, with the second bullet, as you can see. And making sure that these folks have a mechanism by which they can formally be part of the budget and any kind of strategic planning process, as we're doing, for example, at the retreat in February. Um, they want to make sure that the staff liaison adequately hears, understands and relays their thoughts and positions to council. So, um, that advocacy component is important to them to feel appreciated and, and that, that their work matters. Um, they want to find opportunities for cross-pollination. Um, some of them feel like, boy, there could be some leverage that we can gain because we suspect that what one committee or board might be working on might be of interest to another. So those, those kinds of mechanisms to kind of drill down were important to them as well. And then finally, just the blocking and tackling around minutes and agendas and, and the follow-up and the tracking of what did we decide and when and who's following up? Again, you can hear sort of the thematic. So these are the things that are just one piece of what folks were saying they wanted just about their meetings, okay? So based on that, what we, what we, what we pitched were, were two key things to focus on over the past few months. And one is, and this may not be the right terminology, but bear with us because we're, we're in the, the early stages here, that, that the boards and committees would test out adding a secretarial function or a scribe function or some component to their meeting process that would help clarify and focus the energy around decision-making. So, um, we, we, well, let me, let me pause on that. So that's, that's one compa- component. The second piece has to do with the, the, the way in which their requests and ask flow up to council. So those were the two big items that came out and that we've been focusing on, okay?
Jamie, can you elaborate, can you elaborate on this, the secretarial or scribe function?
Yeah, so, so let me, let me, um, I'll, I'll say this and then maybe Stacy, it makes some sense to, to pull up the form without getting too much in the weeds yet. So mayor, um, the, the function and, and having been on a, a board, um, there's, there's an agenda and then there's obviously discussion as, as, as we all know from sitting on council. Um, and there is a need to move meetings from discussion to consensus or clarity around what should we do next? Do we need additional information? Is this something we need to loop back to staff? Do we all agree or not agree and what should we do about that? Um, do we need to park this for some other time? Um, a- all of those components or pieces that every board and committee have happening. And so having some sort of a mechanism to help the process of moving through a meeting so it's effective and efficient and people don't feel like they're talking about the same things that they were talking about two years ago was one of the loud components that we heard coming through. So Stacy, do you think it makes sense to, to show the, the form?
We can.
Okay.
Do you have that or do you need me to share it?
If you would share that, I'm going to stop my screen. So.
Can everybody see that? Is that the right thing, Jamie?
Yeah, that's fine. But it's, can you make it a little larger? So while Stacy's doing this, I went to the hu- the big goal was to not layer on work, to not make this feel bureaucratic, to also help support the clerk. As Joyce will tell you, um, there are times when each board and committee, first of all, they're all managed differently. So in some cases, a board or committee member or board or committee might have Stacy, you know, a town liaison. In some other cases, there may not be a staff member there. So they might need to know how to, the board or committee chair, manage the function of just hitting record. And in doing that, again, this is kind of in the weeds, sometimes it's hard to hear what is being discussed, as simple as that. So the clerk is listening and re-listening and trying to, to make sense of all this. And we thought, well, it could make some sense for the board or committee and the members to be empowered and to be driven and focused on what are the decisions? How, how can we highlight what's coming out of each one of our discussions? So we don't feel stalled, we can move more quickly and more efficiently and be, and feel a little more effective. So the idea was to give them some sort of a, a format by which they could check in with each other on what did we decide, where are we in the process? So we came up with a form, this is way, way early in the draft. We've already beta tested this with two, two um committees and already the people who tested it have given good feedback, but they're drilling down and say, change this, make this change, blah, blah, blah. And so literally, you're in the middle of sausage being made. So I'm, I'm going to pause there and see if that's somewhat answering your question, mayor and, and open it up to my other colleagues, who might want to provide some input.
Yes, thank you.
May I, mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, uh, Jamie, um, it sounded to me more or less like there would be a moderator to a meeting, kind of move things along and then sum it up at the end.
You know, Jane, that's, I, I love how you said the second part, the summing it up in the end and the moderator piece, what ended up happening, um, I can speak to Monday night and Stacy, if you could take that, that down and we can refer back to that and um, as, as we bring this a little more lively uh to the discussion. Monday night, I got to give kudos to Susan Frye and Julie Rutledge because they were willing to give this a try along with their membership. And what Susan Frye gave me permission, and I haven't even mentioned this to the work group because this is sort of late breaking news. Um, we would love for you all as council members to take a peek at that meeting from Monday night. If you would like, we'd love you to take a look at it before December the second and see how it went. What was happening is the, the chair would run through the process of each agenda item and the scribe would say, hold it, okay, here's what we decided. And they'd move on and there was this partnership. And so like you just said, Jane, not only was it the end where there was this reflective summary of here's what we decided, but throughout, they were checking in with each other at the end of each section. And so they found it to be very beneficial. It was the first time, we've got lots to build on and lots more to, to check out. But it was, I was very impressed at, at their willingness to do it and try it and, um, it was exciting to watch. So we would invite you to take a peek at it as well before next, next briefing.
Great. Anyone else, question for Jamie Marie? Um, Jamie, of course, I always ask you what's taking us so long, but now we're getting, beginning to see the fruits of the labors. Um, I'm beginning to have a great deal of appreciation for kind of what's coming out of this process. Um, we, we, you and I have talked about this a number of times about the importance of, of we say we are driven, driven by our boards and committees, sometimes we really aren't. And sometimes our boards and committees feel frustrated because where they think we want to go or where the recommendations are taking us never really bubble up and really are heard. So, um, great job on this so far, I'm, 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 I'm almost conquered.
Almost, I've got, so, so with that said, one, one final thing then, I would, I would ask for your homework is to, to share, um, as I said, to take a look at that, that session. And then the second piece, well, again, I'm sure, yes, sir?
It's, uh, those meetings only exist on um Zoom until I take them down and, and file them into, on, onto our hard drive. So if anybody needs to see that meeting, that please just make a request and bring your, your thumb drive in. I will, will copy the meeting onto your thumb drive.
Thank you, Hank, that's, that's exactly where it's going. The second piece though, just a cue up folks is, so that was one piece of how can we make the meetings as effective and efficient as possible? The second piece is, mayor, you just said it, folks want to know that what they're bringing forward is, is being heard. So what we're also doing into next month and January is giving them an opportunity to do this. And we're figuring out how best to get that information to council prior to retreat so that you can have some information from them and, um, we can make some decisions at the retreat, which then feeds, of course, the whole budget process.
Right.
Okay, and that's it, so you can look for that in January, February. Done.
Very good.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't know who was first.
That was Doc Sadler.
Okay, so, the, um, I, I, and, and I commend you too on the, on the work you've done on this. Uh, what, the last thing you said was that the people want to know that they are heard. Um, so when I, when I think about that, I, I, does it, does it mean they want to know that they're heard and, and listened to? Is that kind of it or, or what?
So one of the-
Understand the distinction, I, I mean, it's, it's a distinction, it does have, it is a difference.
Well, tell, tell me more, what, what you're understanding, the heard and the listened to.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I've, I've heard everything that, that you presented, for instance, for instance. That doesn't mean that that will be translated into some action by me.
Yep.
All right.
Yes.
So that, that, so that's the listening part, I mean, getting it, you, you know what I mean? So, I, I hear you, but do I get it is the kind of thing. So I don't know to what extent people are feeling like, yeah, you, you listened to me, but you really didn't hear what I was trying to tell you.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I don't know if there's some component of that in there or if it's just, we want to provide you- And, uh, so I don't know if there's some component of that in there, or if it's just, we want to provide you with some input and you guys do with it whatever you want.
It, it's more the, the former than the latter. The, the expectation, this gets back to Mayor's original question about, are these people feeling appreciated and fulfilled with the work that they're doing? And so when we started to drill down on that question, what, what they said is we don't need luncheons or t-shirts. We want to know that the work that we're doing is being received. And we would like to get a feedback loop on what you decided to do with that, even if it's a no, even if it's a, we want to at least have a mechanism. And so because staff is taxed and we have a very small staff and a lot of volunteer activity, some of that falls through the cracks. So tightening that up at the meeting level and helping to feed that to, to the clerk and then ultimately up to us. That's what us being the council, that's what they're wanting.
Right.
And that's what we're trying to resolve in the next couple of months.
So, so what I, what I take from what you just said is somebody provides some input and you said, we hear you, but we didn't decide to proceed in the way that you suggested. And here's why. So they wanted me, and here's why I'm part of it.
Yeah, yeah. Just us closing the loop back with them on their hard works. And they understand they serve at the pleasure of, but yeah, it's just courtesy of closing the loop.
All right.
That answer?
Yep.
Sure. Thanks. Anybody else?
Um, very, I kind of follow, um, Mike and Ken regarding, thank you very much for y'all's work that you put into this. Um, one of the things I saw was an annual report, um, to council. Um, was that the frequency that they recommended or had, had y'all looked at quarterly or every six months? Um, can you just give me a little quick bit on that?
So the short answer is more to come on that. Those were sort of proposed, um, ideas. Some of the charters, most of the charters talk about the requirement that boards and committees will provide annual reports to the council. So again, there were things that are supposed to be being done, but they're not being done. And you guys are going to hear about that in the next couple of months, because you're going to have a document that shows a walk across on, here's what we say we're supposed to be doing. And here's what's actually happening. So the thought is by the time 2022 rolls around, end of that year, calendar year cycle, that there would be some sort of an annual report that would go to council to say, here is our plan of work that we agreed to at the beginning of the, the calendar or the fiscal year. And here is what we got accomplished. And here's where our roadblocks were. So that council will have an update annually. Now, if the group decides that it makes more sense to do that in a different way, you'll hear more about that. But that's what the charter requires. I suspect, you know, we'll come up with something that's going to work for them. And obviously hear, hear back from you guys about what you want to.
Ms. Walker.
Let's go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone, am I, oh yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone that council had changed that yearly requirement sometime back. And their charter was changed to read whenever council asks for their report. Because, uh, it was getting to a point where they had done just about everything required of them in the comprehensive plan. And there was really nothing to report either quarterly or annually. So that was one of the questions that we on the committee had. When did council really want to get a report from, from everyone?
Hank, did you have something?
No, I was just trying to make sure that Joyce got her point in.
Anything else? All righty. Looking forward with anticipation as we move forward. Joyce, I believe you have the next two items, please.
Yes, I do. Um, the first one is resolution two, zero, two, one, zero, six, seven. And that will be adopting the 2021 general records schedule for local government agencies, standards one through 10. And this is part of our records retention schedule. In the past, we used to have all of these standards in one document. And, um, the, uh, folks in, uh, the Secretary of State's office have now changed how we do things. And we must approve these various standards annually. So this is the first one for standards one through 10.
Very good. Would it be like Ms. Walker to elaborate anymore? Or are we comfortable moving forward?
Motion to approve resolution 2021, zero, six, seven.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any additional discussion? Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Ms. Franklin. Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
The disappearing Mr. Smithman. David.
David.
Hank, why don't you, uh, why don't you check? Uh, that's, that's untypical of Mr. Smithman.
Yeah, I'll go look for him. He's, he's, uh, left conference room.
Oh, he has. Okay. Very good. He may have, he may have felt a calling. All righty. Um, that.
Still has his connection, sir. So he's going to be considered a yes vote.
Very good. So the mayor's yes, that's unanimous. Ms. Walker, next item.
Okay. The second, the second item we have is resolution two, zero, two, one, zero, six, eight. And this is for standards 11 through 21 for our local government agencies. As I said before, the same thing, we must approve that.
Very good. Do we have a motion, please?
Moved.
Franklin makes the motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Welch makes the second. Any further discussion? Franklin. Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Uh, I missed somebody. Dr. Sadler. Look on your screen. Yeah. Very good. And Mr. Smithen will be presumed a yes. So mayor's yes, that's unanimous. Stacy, we have a, setting a public hearing for December 9th.
Yes, um, this is resolution two, zero, two, one, zero, six, nine, to set a public hearing for case number L 101. Um, the planning board heard this case, had a public hearing at their October 13th meeting. Um, it was tabled to their October 27th meeting for a further discussion. And then they did have a vote, um, and voted to approve it, but with conditions. And so now the next step is for this to go to town council for the public hearing for the rezoning, um, to be scheduled for December 9th. So we need to, um, adopt that to, to set that public hearing, uh, which then entails me to send out notifications and newspaper ads.
Very good. We have a motion for a public hearing, please. Dr. Sadler makes the motion. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any additional discussion?
I have a quick question. Yes, Stacy, would you mind saying real briefly where that would be located?
It is all at the intersection of, um, the Williams Road off ramp. It's, it's on Williams Road, but, um, the front edge of the properties along Williams Road, um, across from Dab Road in between like the church and the ramp, um, the back of the property abuts the, uh, US 420 off ramp.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Um, let's crank again. Ms. Foster. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Franklin. Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
Mr. Smith is presumed a yes. Mayor's yes, that's unanimous. Uh, Hank, you have the third item.
Or the fourth item. Okay. Yeah, fourth item. Um, this is ordinance two, zero, two, one, zero, six, two, amending budget ordinance two, zero, two, one, zero, zero, one, in an amount of $6,763 for the demolition of a structure at three, one, two Louisville Vianna Road. Of course, everyone remembers from last week, uh, our public works director, Ryan Moser, when he was here, updated council about this building and what it had been used for from the fire departments and the sheriff's office. And also explained then that he would be bringing a budget amendment forth this evening. This is the budget amendment for the demolition of the building.
I have a question for you, Hank. Yes, sir. Question. Um, I, I heard Ryan use that very bad A word asbestos in his discussion last week. I assume that this, uh, figure of 67, 63 will make sure that that is probably abated.
I, I, I'm assuming it is, but I will verify that with Mr. Moser.
Uh, like I say, he's the one mentioned that, that, uh, there was asbestos in, in.
That's correct. I think he told us last week that there would have to be an additional survey. Um, I'll, I will get with him to make sure that, uh, we are all clear on that.
Any other questions for Hank? Entertained a motion, please.
Don't move.
Ms. Welch makes the motion.
I'll say.
I think Ms. Hunt kind of slipped in there, makes the second. Any further discussion? Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Franklin. Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
Mr. Smithman.
Hi.
Mayor's eye, that is unanimous. Thank you. Hank, lead off our administrative reports, please.
Okay, uh, we'll start this with tomorrow, the 11th, Thursday. Town offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. Moving forward, later in the month, town offices will be closed on Thursday, the 25th and Friday, the 26th for the Thanksgiving holidays. And then I'm going to skip down to Friday, uh, December 3rd, which will be our tree lighting at the square. And, um, that's where I'll stop at that point. We'll get into next month, next month.
Would you like to, uh, mention our Christmas break?
Okay. It's not our event, so it's not on my, my, uh, my list.
Right.
Joyce, you want to say what it is?
Yes, that's going to be on Sunday, the 12th. It's always the second Sunday of the month. And, uh, there is some information in this current newsletter to give people an idea of the date, the time it'll start, when roads will be closed, et cetera.
And since this is a town event, let me also bring everyone's attention, starting November 16th, on the 16th, Wednesday, the 17th, Thursday, the 18th, Friday, the 19th, and Saturday, the 20th, we will have an open house week for our residents to come in and see our wonderful new community center. During the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, it'll be from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. On Saturday, it'll be 9:00 AM to noon. So, uh, ladies and gentlemen, um, I encourage you to come by during the open house week. I think you will, you will feel greatly, I don't want to say greatly proud, I think you will feel very proud um, of what this new facility is, what it can mean to you and what it means to the town. So we encourage you to come by, visit with us, council members will be there and we'll just have a grand old time. So, uh, uh, please mark that on your calendar. Stacy, you have a report on Louisville tomorrow, today, tonight?
Yes, um, I'm happy to present that I attended the Parks and Rec Board, um, meeting on Monday night and they did go over, um, from their October meeting, they were presented the, um, master parks and rec plan, their, their half of the Louisville tomorrow project. Um, that is a final, final document and they have gone through, they made a few corrections here and there. Um, and then at their Monday night meeting, they voted to recommend approval, uh, to the council. So that should be coming before you, um, hopefully in December. I meet with the consultants this week, uh, to figure out our next steps. Um, but, uh, I can go ahead and, and be forwarding that to you. So you can be reading through the document yourselves. Um, so we're, we're happy that that is on its way. So I think that the Parks and Rec Board has done a great job with their inputs. Um, so kudos to them as well.
Very good. Thank you. Um, Ms. Walker. Your clerk's report.
Okay, time for me. Um, this, everybody can read what I have at the bottom. Uh, the Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission has identified two open positions. So if you click on the information that's in your, uh, agenda, you can go to look at the application for those two open positions. One is an at-large and the other is a truly required position where you have to be an architect. So there's more information up on the county's website if you're interested in doing that. The second item I wanted to.
Ms. Walker, may I?
Go ahead.
Council members, if you have anybody in mind, which I think one person sitting here does, me, uh, who would be a great appointment for this position at the at-large position, or if you know somebody who's an architect, uh, let's put our heads together and so we can make sure that that individual is interested and get them to fill out the application. So we can do a little, do a little lobbying behind the scenes to get them pointed.
And that works.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Uh, you're welcome. Uh, the other thing, I just wanted to remind everyone about the election. Um, the election must, uh, results must be certified and they're supposed to be done within 30 days of the election. So when I get that information, um, I will let you know. We will have our oath of office for everyone, as I stated at the briefing. We will have that, um, on the, what was the date for that meeting? I forgot. Anyway, it's the second, uh, second Thursday. I think it's the ninth.
Ninth.
So we will, we will be doing it that night.
I understand we have a, a guest individual to come in and do the swearing in this time.
It'll be me.
Yeah.
My last act. But anyway, um, the last thing I wanted to, uh, let you all know is this came in today around 4:30 or 5 o'clock. And that came from the league. Uh, they have, uh, started to work on the essentials of municipal government. Oh dear. Hold on. Okay. Anyway, um, they've started to work on that. And I was looking for thoughts from everyone as to what you wanted to do this time. I don't have dates yet. I don't have any specifics, but I just wanted you to start thinking about it. So when we go to our meeting on December 7th, and you all will have thought about it. And I will have more information, which I will try to email to you as soon as I get it.
This is, this is primarily designed for newly elected officials, but there's always information that they add that we may not have had before.
Right. And, uh, Mike, you will also notice, I think the last time we went, they had newly elected. And then they had some straight courses just for those who have been in office a while. So, um, like I said, as soon as I get the information, I'll email it to you so you can make some decisions about it.
Great. Thank you.
A question please for Joyce.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yes, Joyce, now, I think in the past, we've been able to either do that by Zoom or in person. And then it was also done in different areas, um, of the, of the county. Is that, do you suppose that'll still be the same? And are we required? Um, you, well, you're not really required to go to the essentials. What you are required to do is to take the ethics training. Whether you've been on council for five years or 50 years, you still have to take it every time you are elected. And, uh, again, I don't have any specific information yet, but as soon as I get it, I will send it to you. Um, when we went the last time, it was just before COVID hit. So that was in person. So I'm not quite sure what they'll be doing this year.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Joyce? All right, Hank, want to go over approvals of our briefing session, please?
Yes, we had a couple of things. Uh, the first is we have the approval of ordinance two, zero, two, one, zero, six, zero, amending budget ordinance two, zero, two, one, zero, zero, one, in an amount of 15,000 to increase the budget for the supplies at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. And then next, we, um, hmm, we opened up a bunch of sealed minutes and I don't know, do I need to read these days, Joyce?
No.
Please don't.
Okay. I don't want to really. Anyway, that's it. And then lastly, we approved ordinance two, zero, two, one, zero, six, one, amending budget ordinance two, zero, two, one, zero, zero, one, in an amount of $7,425 to increase the budget for UDO updates by Muni code. And that is it.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, from time to time, we do find it necessary to take action in our briefings, which occur on the first Thursday of every month. We like to report those actions out to you at our regular council meeting so that you know what we've done last week. Um, ladies and gentlemen, we're down to the final point for public comment. Uh, there's the information for those of you who have been anxiously awaiting. Phone number six, four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six. Or go to louisvillenc.net, scroll down, click on the Zoom link and you can join us by Zoom. Give it a second here. Hank, we'll go ahead and start. If anybody is in the meeting would, would like to raise their hand.
No, there is no one indicating they wish to speak.
Okay. Very good. Very good. Okay, Stace, thank you. Uh, of course, you can always submit written comments. Any written comments, go to townclerk@louisvillenc.net and they will be made a part of the record of this meeting. Council members. Anything to discuss, anything to share?
Mike, just, or Mayor, excuse me, very quickly, I, I went back and did a little research about the post office, if you will. The current, the site where current Colts heating and air is currently at, used to be our post office. And prior to that, there was a small one where the Ford Brothers, the, the old Ford Brothers store, now the, whatever the quality oil station is. But the, we, we moved from two, a point two, three acres where Colts cooling is at to the current site is 1.09 acres. All right. In this current, the, the site that's common is 2.34 acres. So it's going to be much better and serviceable for the community from where we have come from to where we are getting ready to go. And I, I just remember when they moved from the Colts cooling site to the current site, my mother was postmastered then and had to make that move and get everything running and all that good stuff back in the very early eighties. So this, the, the current structure is about 40 years old. And, you know, it's, it's time for a new building that's going to last us for the next 40 years for the town of Louisville.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Franklin. I expect that position on the Historic Resources Commission might be available. Council members, Dr. Sadler.
So for the week of the 16th, when we're doing the, the opening or the tours or the, or the grand opening up for the community center, is there, is the schedule of when we're supposed to be there going to be published? I mean, I went online and did it in the little signup app, but I, I guess I'm remiss because I don't know, remember exactly when I said I would show up.
I believe you said you'd show up Friday evening, but let me, thank you for bringing that, that, that item up. There are still plenty of opportunities for council members who wish to be there and volunteer and meet our residents and show off our new shirt, showcase. You can go to Evite, Ms. Walker, why don't we send that back out to the, to all the council members, the Evite link? So they can take a look at, at the opportunities.
Oh, okay.
If you would also be kind enough to publish who's there when.
You bet.
That, that'd be helpful, I think.
Very good. We'll do that.
Yeah, I had, I had a little bit trouble with Evite that I, I think I sent an email instead, but I'm planning to be there Friday. That's the only time I can be there Friday.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. We'll make note of that.
It's Saturday too. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would be remiss. I was focused on the, the Zoom for you all to look at as sort of the, the model. I didn't mention that Kay Smitherman and Brian Schroeder also tried to do a little beta test. I just was, I lost my Zoom connection last night, so I wasn't able to, to, to watch and be involved. So I just wanted to, but it gave a shout out to them because they were Johnny on the spot, gave it a shot. So thank you to, to those folks.
That's it. Very good. Council members, anything else? Just a couple of notes that I have, obviously, I, we mentioned the open house week, November 16th through the 20th. Hope everyone will attend that. We want to congratulate all of our council members for the tough election battles that you faced this last week. And all of you were reelected and so congratulations. We've got a great team moving forward for these next two years. I know we're going to continue to do great things. Sergeant Stringer kind of took my, my, my thunder on wishing all of our veterans a, a happy Veterans Day tomorrow. And certainly it's a symbol of our respect and admiration for your service to our country. I hope it's a day that we will all stop at some point and pause and remember that because of them, we have what we have and can do what we do. So if you'll do that tomorrow, that would be great. And thank you, veterans. Finally, I guess, I want to really recognize our staff. We're in the, we're, we're in the home stretch, coming up on the finish line for the opening of the community center. They have done an amazing job over the last year, year and a half, two years in moving this project forward. We are just, we are just so fortunate how, how they have embraced this project as their own. They've taken real ownership. They've had a great deal of participation and, and their hard work is really going to be showcased when we open the center. So staff, thank you very much for all the work you do. Uh, I think that's all my notes. Council members, if there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, one comment, please, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Speaking of Veterans Day, I have to say, as a proud stepmom, our son is going to be promoted December the 3rd. I will miss the council briefing as, as we will be at Mount Vernon for his promotion in the Air Force as a Colonel.
He'll be a full Colonel.
He'll be a full burn Colonel. Now, the next promotion would be general, whether or not he goes up for that or retires before, who knows? But of course, we're very proud of the amen of appreciative of all our veterans.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Please extend our congratulations to John. I know he's a proud Pappy.
He absolutely is. Thank you.
Council members, anything else this evening? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Unless everybody wants to stay here.
Getting worried about this.
Ms. Welch makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any additional discussion? Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Franklin. Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
Mr. Smithman.
Hi.
Mayor's eye, that is unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here and we're adjourned for the season.